And we'll begin with the Department of Community Development. So you can see down there in the bottom of this slide, we have five staff members within the, under the umbrella of the department. First of which, Sandy Cross. You can see with this word cloud has quite a variety of different duties and tasks. This cloud, we had to keep it within the confines of the screen and we struggled with that. But someone who all of you know wears an awful lot of hats, does an awful lot of good things for the town. We're not going, we were asked this year to focus more on where we're heading than what we've done. Otherwise, we could spend 10 minutes here on the accomplishments over the past year. So moving forward to a few others here. Kay Nickens, who many of you know, has recently received and, you know, due to her, her good work and what she's shown us she could do, a promotion to deputy clerk slash permitting technician position there. Again, someone who serves a variety of different roles in the town, which I think you'll see as a theme for a lot of this moving forward. She is not with us today because she's actually part of her, in her clerk course. So she is still in the, the learning stages of, you know, for town clerks, working quite extensively with Lori in that part of her position, but also still providing assistance to the building, planning side of the house as far as arranging inspections and that sort of thing. Steve McMurray, again, a man of many hats. The position itself is set up as not, not a purely building inspection position, although that really, over the past few years has probably, to be fair, has probably become a more primary role of that position than what was originally envisioned when we first sat down and talked with Steve about accepting the position. There was certainly a much greater maintenance coordinator aspect to that position as it was originally intended. The coordination part of that is still in place. In other words, Steve is responsible for that program about taking care of the, you know, the town buildings and, and assets and things of that nature. But he's had less time to, to work on those things individually. And that is our segue into the next person. Kim Pittman, who was hired on as a part-time maintenance technician to really work with the town on a lot of these projects and just, just things around this property. And you'll see him here and there doing a great variety of different things for the town. And, you know, right now his big project that if you haven't seen it, and today might not be the best day, but go, go ahead and take a peek at the, the amphitheater. And you, you can see under construction there, but he's been hard at work for a number of months, basically reconstructing all of the seating for the amphitheater, a project that's saving the town tens of thousands of dollars over what it would have cost to actually contract that out and bid it. So we appreciate his hard work on that and, you know, he's doing a, a great job with those aspects of a, something that's a growing need for the town. And finally, we've got me with, again, a few different hats. And this year in particular, obviously had to even, even wear another. But, you know, dealing with planning, development, grant writing. You know, we've seen the department with a shift, a lot of what Sandy and I have been looking at have to deal with things like coastal resiliency, dealing with floodplain management, looking at projects like the living shoreline, at ways that we can improve the resiliency and sustainability of our community. So we were joking earlier that in years past, we've pulled out a little planning humor. This year, we're not going to do that. We, we know how well that went over. So I was beaten into submission and instead are going, going for inspirational quotes instead. So this is, but these are, these are important things that I think, you know, they're things that made me think about what it means. So, you know, planning is bringing the future into the present so we can do something about it now. So it's really kind of anticipating or looking at, and a lot of that involves working with citizens, working with our elected leaders, working with different groups in the community to identify what are those key issues that people see coming in the future? And, and again, finding ways, whether it's through projects or it could be an ordinance that's adopted or something like that. But finding ways to address those issues before they become significant problems for the community. And looking at ways, and more than that, looking at ways to build upon what we've done. It doesn't always have to be an issue. It's oftentimes, how can we make this community better? You know, better place to live, better place to visit, that kind of thing. So that being said, our, the focus of our presentation today is looking at what we're going to be doing this fiscal year and beyond. So we're going to cover a good bit. So we begin by looking at ways that our department helps people in the community. Just noting here, world is moved along, not only by the mighty shoves of its heroes, but by the aggregate of tiny pushes of each honest worker. Helen Keller with an interesting quote there, as far as the way things tend to work. It's not always the one big thing, but a lot of little things that really add up to positive results. So what are some of the ways that we do that? We deal every day, building permits, inspections, things like that. Every single day, our staff, all five of us have a hand in that. Where we are reviewing plans, we're meeting with, you know, before a plan is ever submitted, we're meeting with people to discuss concepts, what they can do, what they can't do, what's the best way, the most efficient way we can make that happen for them. Building permits, who are reviewing what is submitted by architects, engineers, other designers, working with them. So, you know, Steve, Sandy and I will have conversations with them again on the, the best way to, to move something forward. And then that dovetails into the inspections, of course, during the, the process. And those are in place to really protect our, our public safety. You know, we don't, the average person doesn't know whether a contractor is building something in a manner that's going to be safe in the long term. Part of our role is in evaluating those plans and doing those inspections, is making sure that that's what happens. So an important role there, but we're, we're, we're working to help people through that process because it's not something that most of them are familiar with. So that's an important role for us. Kama permits, we're calling that out separately because that's a very, sort of a niche market for us. But Sandy Cross in particular, works, you know, probably our staff person working most directly with that. But again, helping people through that process. We have an awful lot of waterfront and areas here that are subject to those Kama requirements. And again, she's assisting people through that process, issuing a lot of permits herself, but also helping people through the process if they're dealing with the Elizabeth City Office. We're serving boards, committees, obviously standing here before you today and on many other occasions. But Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, other committees that have been formed, such as the Land Use Plan Advisory Committee. We had a pedestrian plan advisory committee, you know, those are, are formed on an as-needed basis. And the staff supports those efforts, trying to provide some guidance, trying to provide information to help those committees and boards make educated decisions. I can tell you that I've, I've said this on numerous occasions, that, that when I feel good about what we've done is when I feel that, that you have made an educated decision. I don't, you know, it's up to you, you know, I may or may not agree personally with something that's decided. But as long as, you know, I feel like you've been, we've been able to provide you the information you needed, there weren't questions lingering out there. I feel that we've done, done our jobs in, in helping you do your jobs. Working alongside volunteers, this is certainly something we've been able to do. On the left there is a capable volunteer who came with us this summer, was one of our, part of our ambassador program downtown, educating people on some of the rules of the road, sidewalks, bike lanes and best way to use those, as well as answering other questions that folks had. But we've also got, we've got numerous programs. On the right is a part of our cleanup. We've had a typically one or two of those a year where we do a soundside cleanup, where we're out there with the volunteers and coordinating that. Obviously Christian and Betsy will talk more about their, their role in volunteers. But another significant one within our department, again, Sandy Cross has led the efforts to do the Volunteer Beach Planting Program that has involved just dozens and dozens of people over time. Working with the Duck Merchants Association. So again, we're providing support to them in many ways. Again, Christian and Betsy will maybe talk a little bit more about their, some direct involvement that they have on their side of the house. But in our case, we're looking at support. You may recall at the very beginning of this COVID pandemic, the big questions that came up were, how are restaurants going to survive? How are they going to continue to provide service? And we put together a, a lot of information in a very short period of time so the council could consider and adopt appropriate standards to allow those types of activities to expand into outdoor areas that allowed our restaurants to continue to at least function on a level that, that's kept them going. So that's just one example, but obviously we work with them on a variety of issues over time. Again, helping people. These are things that most people don't think about, but have significant impacts on our community. It's not just our department. Police and fire in particular are also involved in, in the town's ratings here. These ratings reflect back on people's insurance rates moving forward. So the better we're able to, to meet these standards, provide these services, then the better rating we get, the lower insurance rates are or the more available they are to, to business owners, property owners in our community. So again, key things, our ISO rating, in our, in our case, that deals a lot with our building, building inspection program. As far as establishing that, do we have the codes adopted? Has Steve kept up with his certifications? How often do we do what, you know, what kind of rules do we have in place? All that goes into it. CRS rating is just, we, we could have an hour-long presentation on everything that goes into that. It's just, it's just fascinating, the level of, you know, the different things that they, they go into to establish that flood rating for flood insurance. Sandy Cross has really grabbed that by the horns over the past year or so and really put the town in a much better position. As we've reported, we anticipate getting at least a one-spot increase. And I just got to think with the number of points we gained, we're, we, if we're darn close to getting a second spot if we, if we don't reach it. So that's something we look forward to improving upon in the future as well with those efforts. There's education, it involves the ordinances that we adopt and enforce, just a whole variety of things, the amount of open space we have in the community and particularly in flood zones, just a whole lot of things that go into that. Helping people by providing public education and resources. We work along with Christian and Betsy on some of these programs. You can see there related to recycling, floodplain management, use of water resources, just a variety of things that, that we've prioritized as a community and provide information on. And then I did want to just highlight this one specially. You recall with the, the great amount of work that went into our, our response to the recent flood maps and, you know, what we did to adopt ordinances to address some of the issues with those maps. As a result of that, the communities in Dare County were selected to provide a presentation at the National Conference for the Association of State Floodplain Managers. That's coming up this May. So they're going to be, it, it is a virtual conference. Unfortunately, they didn't get the, they don't get the perks of traveling anywhere. But, you know, that just shows the, the quality of work that was done to address that issue and how we're helping other communities understand what we did and take a look at adopting similar measures as needed. "A man who does not plan long ahead will find trouble at his door." Confucius. So in that vein, we, as a town, have engaged in plenty of planning efforts. As you're, as you're well aware, because I know it took up plenty of your time as well, had an absolutely significant year. This, this is probably the one part of the presentation where we're looking back. But it's just, you know, when I look back, I was still like, golly, we really do all that? But just a series of very significant planning efforts for this community that all came to fruition in 2020. So we have the vulnerability assessment. You may recall at this very, very meeting last year, the folks from Western Carolina University came down and shared some of their findings in a presentation. Again, the, the purpose of this document, this information was to look at public infrastructure. We did also get them to broaden that to include the commercial development in town. So, you know, basically our core area here in Duck Village, as well as a few other commercial spots throughout the town. And what they were doing was using a variety of factors and models to evaluate which of those assets, both public, focused on public, but also some private ones in there, were vulnerable. And in our case, the, most of what we're talking about relates to flooding, in, in our case. That, that was the most significant vulnerability we have as a community. The picture, the photograph we've got there on the right shows what was identified as our most vulnerable asset. That little stretch of NC 12 where we're looking at doing the elevation project. And that, that's, that, so this information is really what, what elevated that in our minds and got us thinking about ways we could address that issue and looking, when that break grant opportunity came up, that, why that captured our attention. So other significant plans, Outer Banks Hazard Mitigation Plan. This time around, it seems like it changes every, every five years when we do this. But this time included, it was limited to just Dare and Currituck Counties, as well as all the municipalities within Dare. So it is a, it's considered a regional plan, but it's a much smaller region than the last one we did. Again, the intent of this plan is taking a broad look at all the different potential hazards that this community has. Again, everything from flooding, hurricanes, to some other things like hazardous waste spill. Thing, you know, there's just all kinds of things that are in that plan that are identified, discussed, thoroughly, you know, looked at. But then each town within that plan has its own section with, that identifies recommendations on what we are seeking to do as a town. What are the initiatives that we're moving forward to address some of these hazards? This is one of the most important documents that we have because whenever we're applying for these environmental grants, particularly FEMA grants, this is what they look at. They, they look at that and say, is it in that plan? Is this project in that plan? We may even come to a point where we amend this plan for us to include some other things if we identify other issues. But we've got a pretty good list here. So I think we, we've got a good amount of work in front of us to, to meet these, to meet what's in that plan already. But a very important thing about our community and keeping it a safe and resilient place. The other large one, again, over a year in the making, our comprehensive and Kama land use plan that was finally adopted. We, you know, after some delays due to COVID and the difficulty in putting together appropriate public hearings and meetings, was finally adopted in August, the, the initial plan. Again, something that involved, you know, we, we had hundreds of people who participated in this plan by providing comments, helping, you know, helping guide this plan with the advisory committee, which I, you know, the council had appointed a very representative committee to do that involving, you know, we had everybody, council, planning board, Board of Adjustment members, sort of active citizens who understood some of the town interests. We had representatives there from the business community, from neighborhood associations, both on the management side as well as just citizen side. So a very, very good group to work with. And we, you know, we got through that and got the recommendations to you on, again, identified a variety of different issues and opportunities that the town has and recommendations on how we can move forward to achieve those goals and objectives in that plan. Another very significant document for us as it involves grants, but also significant in, you know, with your review of, of certain projects. You know, you'll note in the staff report, you almost always have a section in there that deals with pieces of this plan and how the project or the ordinance addresses that, whether it appears to be in compliance with that plan. And I've lumped this one in there, even though technically it was an ordinance, to me, it's a plan. It was a way, you know, we can call it an implementing, maybe implementing some recommendations. But we took a look at what we were handed with those flood maps and the challenges that we were going to be facing as a community. We built consensus with home builders, border realtors, insurers, engineers, financial side of the house. And with all of that, we were able to come up with a, you know, with a proposal that everybody could kind of get around. And every, every town had a few details that we, you know, tweaked for our own entry, you know, to cover what we felt was most important. But across the Outer Banks, these, these were adopted and are really going to play an important role for us moving forward in, in continuing to build a resilient community. And I've already used that word for time, haven't I? It's plan or speak, I'm sorry. But hey, resilience. And this gets to the heart of resiliency here. Richard Cushing, who was the American prelate of the Roman Catholic Church, had a great quote about planning, you know, always plan ahead. It wasn't raining when Noah built the ark. You know, he started that project long before, you know, based on information he had about a future need and that, that's to a great degree what we're doing here. So as we move forward, what are some other things that aren't, aren't on our immediate horizon here? But as we, as we're looking into the future, things that we might need to take a look at at some point? This is a little broader type of planning effort, a climate adaptation plan. What this typically does is, you know, again, it involves the whole community in the, in the process, but tries to identify, again, ways that we might have to adapt to in, in the future. And this is a very long-term plan. A road elevation is a great example of a recommendation that would come out of this. But it's looking at ways that we as a community might have to adapt how we do things in order to continue moving forward successfully in the future. Now, this is, this is a plan that goes way, you know, this might be looking 20, 30, 50 years out there. So this isn't going to be a plan that results, you know, we have a lot of immediate project results out of. This is something that was identified in the Land Use Plan and Hazard Mitigation Plan, looking at efforts to study our soundside. You know, we've done a good job, very thorough job of looking at the, the oceanfront vulnerabilities. At some point here, this one is probably a little shorter term, but at some point, we're going to want to put a little bit more time and effort into studying our soundside issues, flooding, erosion and things like that in a more comprehensive way. John Kennedy. "The time to repair the roof is when the sun is shining." So again, similar, similar theme there. And this is one of the ways we did that with our beach renourishment project. And, you know, as we had an extensive presentation on yesterday, Ken Wilson was CPE. This is going to be one of the most significant things we're working with over the next year. So looking at our beach renourishment and again, planning ahead of time, not waiting for a storm to come. And we have a situation like we, we've had in the past where we see pools falling down onto the beach. You know, we're doing what we can proactively to stay ahead of that with beach renourishment and providing that protection for those oceanfront properties and those communities behind them. As part of that, we have our annual beach and dune monitoring. That'll continue. Again, to, to reiterate that the, the monitoring part of that equation is something we do along the entire beach, not, not just the nourished portion of the beach, but the entire town from north to south. We supplement those efforts with our volunteer beach grass planting. Again, very successful program. And we do have a, we'll, we'll talk about the contracted part of this a little bit later today. So I'm not going to touch on that. Other, other topics, other things we'll be looking at include this. You know, looking at workforce and essential housing. To truly be sustainable as a community, we have to have opportunity. We have businesses here that have hundreds of employees. It's not necessary that they're all, every one of those is housed in Duck, but we do have to have opportunities for them. I just put a couple of buildings up there because those happen to be buildings that although they're mainly, most people look at them and say retail establishment, they are buildings that contain accessory apartments. So it doesn't have to be something, you know, we're not necessarily talking about building a, you know, with people, a traditional affordable housing complex or something of that nature that, that tends to have a, you know, negative tone to it. We're talking about finding these opportunities to work this into the, the pattern, the fabric of our community in ways, you know, where we don't notice it, but it's convenient and provides and as that, that word that the county came up with in their program, the word essential, I thought was a really, really nice way to summarize this. Because we're not talking about the, we're not even talking about the lowest end of the totem pole. You know, we're talking about police officers, firefighters, other people in our community who have, you know, what most people would consider to be kind of nice, you know, middle-of-the-road positions and, but can't afford to live here. So it would be nice if those opportunities could be there for people who want to, to do that. So that's a definitely a topic we'll, you know, as far as planning that we may want to look at in the future. at in the future. "Good fortune is what happens when opportunity meets with planning." Thomas Edison. So this case, we sometimes run across, whether it's coincidental or what, you know, but when we have these plans that are adopted, we've identified all these issues and opportunities and then a grant pops up and we say, ooh, you know, I can take a look at that. Let's see if this, how this fits in and does, is this going to allow us to do what we, one of these things we said we're going to do? And we've had some, just some wonderful things, and we'll say fall into our lap. I mean, there's obviously research and connections and other things that go into that, but the Living Shoreline Project. Again, this was something we had been, been looking at, as Chris DeWitt with VHB spoke eloquently about yesterday. You know, we had an opportunity here to, you know, to look at a project that we'd been considering and this, how this protects and supports the original plan to do a sidewalk extension. Well, lo and behold, we had a, you know, grant opportunity from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and they have committed to pay half of the costs of this substantial project along, along that corridor that we talked about yesterday. Other things, you know, related to that, right next to it, we have our project for NC Highway 12 elevation with a brick grant. Again, another opportunity and we had to finagle the other grants a little bit to make this, to make this work. Thankfully, those other granting agencies were willing to do that. But in this case, again, finding an opportunity to really fund it, a very substantial portion of these improvements, allowing the town to use its, its funds wisely and efficiently. Third aspect of that project are, would be the continuation of the sidewalks and bike lanes, those pedestrian improvements through that stretch. And we talked about, we were able to get a, a grant from Dare County Tourism Board related to this project as well. So that'll, that'll supplement that. And if we get the brick grant, will serve as part of the match for that, that grant. Other things we're looking at, we've talked about this one briefly already yesterday. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time on it, but this is the N Core Program, a state level where we'll be looking at a phased grant to hopefully address neighborhood flooding. So again, we've talked about that occurring over a three-year period. Other things that potentially can follow, these are things that are identified in our plans that we're really going to be looking at, that we think there's going to be opportunities there to help with funding some of these. Septic system study and monitoring. There were some very good points and information, points made and information provided during the land use plan about the need to take a look at how sea level rise is potentially impacting septic systems. This study has already been done in the town of Naggs Head. So they, they have completed a very similar study to what we would be looking at. They did that in partnership with East Carolina University at the Coastal Studies Institute over in, near One Cheese. And, and it's something that, you know, again, is identified in our land use plan as something that would be helpful to look at way, you know, what kind of issues do we have? What ways can we address those issues? So that's, that's one that, you know, we're keeping our eyes open on. Ben Franklin, or growing up right in Philadelphia, this was the, this was the man. He was bigger than George Washington. By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail. So here, we're getting into the, with these plans, permits, implementation, you know, bringing these, these ideas we have in the plans online, you know, going forward. So I just want to highlight a couple other things as we get nearer to the end of, of my presentation. In this case, one of the things we're, we're looking at here are the, the need for a position in this case. So I'm going to highlight this because this is a, an item that we'll obviously be discussing further, moving forward through the budget process. So one of the issues we've had as a department, we've lost half a position with the transfer Kay to deputy town clerk. The staff has, particularly this past year with the amount of development activity, has really been overloaded with present duties. You, it would not be uncommon to, to see some of us, you know, here on weekends or, you know, working hours after, you know, we'd be hanging around after five and that kind of thing. We also have a couple of holes. We had some temporary relief from this with a, a long-term intern from ECU's planning program, but we don't have anyone who I would say is well-versed in computer mapping and GIS. Sandy has, has worked at this as time is allowed and can do some, can do some good things, but we don't have anybody who's really looking at that holistically, the best way to use that as a community, those tools. So we have a need there. We have all of these opportunities and challenges. I've just touched on a handful of them in the presentation, things that are identified in the Hazard Mitigation Plan and Land Use Plan. We have all of those, again, opportunities and challenges and those plans that, that we need to address. You know, Duck, Duck has, has never been a community that's adopted plans and just for the sake of adopting a plan and letting it sit there, you know, when we've adopted plans, pedestrian plan's a perfect example of that, you know? There's a lot of communities who went to that effort, got that partially funded by a grant and adopted it, looked at it and said, oh, that's going to cost a little bit of money to, to do that. Let's wait on DOT 10 years down the road, you know, to look at our plan and do something about it. You know, this town stepped up and said, these are things we've identified as being important to us and therefore we want to go ahead and do what we can to get these adopted and finding opportunities to help with funding to make that happen quicker. So we have those, these things out there and, you know, need some greater capability to, to follow up on those things and make sure they're happening, the things that this community has identified as being important. We also have a number of large special projects on the horizon, the, the brick grant, the neighborhood flooding issues, the beach renourishment project, things that we're going to be directly involved with during the, the final design, planning, construction process. We have a role in all of those aspects of it. And those are all coming online. We also have, as a community, some increased priorities, one regarding floodplain management and that CRS program I spoke about. Sandy has probably spent as great an amount of time, of her time on those issues as anything else that she does in, you know, over the past year in particular, but really a few years. You know, so again, those are things that have just grown in importance to us and we see benefits in a community by doing a good job on those things. And then finally, that increased focus on community resiliency, there's a lot of opportunities. Again, I, you know, I joke about it being the, the planning term of the moment, but there are just a lot of agencies from a federal and state level that are really harping on that. They're looking at ways that, you know, communities can build themselves in ways that are safer, more sustainable, looking into the future, limiting damage to buildings and structures and ensuring that they continue on into the future, that they have a longer life, as well as limiting or, sorry, providing, improving public safety so that people aren't affected directly by things like, you know, the hazardous type of conditions. So those are some of the issues that we were, we're looking at. And in order to address that, we had a proposal, we had talked about a little bit earlier when we, we may have had an opportunity to hire someone into this position back in the fall, but we would like to bring up the discussion again about hiring a community planner. So this, what we're looking at here in this case would be an entry-level position. We're looking at this as being someone who wouldn't necessarily be doing all the things on the prior page, but would be taking some duties away from Sandy and I in particular, allowing us to spend more time on those things as well as being involved in that. We want this person, you know, to grow within that position as well with their responsibilities. We want them, so as, as part of that, they would assist with plan review and permitting duties, you know, working with Sandy, working with Kay, working with Steve to some degree on, you know, what they can do to help facilitate to make those processes more efficient and begin to take on more of those duties as they, as they grow into that position. Assist with facilitating planning processes. We see, you know, we would want to hire someone who has that kind of capability to work, you know, who's comfortable talking with people in the community who can, you know, really, you know, help gain an understanding of what is important to people in the community as we continue to, with these planning processes in the future. Conduct studies and analysis, report findings. You know, we have issues that pop up from time to time that we, that we look at. Over the past year, Savannah, or, you know, the intern that we, we had for that period of time, did studies on parking in Duck Village. It was an issue that came up and we needed to get a more comprehensive understanding of what is out there, you know, what we've approved in the past as far as relief from parking requirements and looking at ways that, the way the parking works within Duck Village. She had another study that we talked about, it actually came up yesterday with the capital improvement program, where we, she did a study relating to the retaining walls along Duck, as far as documenting what we have, working with a, you know, with some assistance, working with a contractor on identifying what the solutions are and even getting estimates on what that would cost the town moving forward to address some of the more immediate safety needs. Assisting with implementing the planned projects and policies, that's one I just kind of highlighted. That's really going to be one of the most important things we're doing over the next three, five years. Maybe it's something that never ends, you know, we're keep coming up with good ideas and ways to, to improve things and address issues and, and that's a role that we're going to have moving forward. But in particular with the, the recent adoption of those plans, I think it's, it's just an important statement for us, to our community that you've identified, you, you took a lot of time and effort in identifying these things for us. We're responding by trying to address what we can, you know, within the limitation of time and budget, but, you know, we need to show people that we're, we're looking at, at their interests and needs and we're trying to address those things as we can. Assisting with our floodplain management program, again, as, as I mentioned, Sandy's done, you know, real yeoman's work on that over this past year in particular, but there's a lot of aspects of that that, you know, community planner position could work with as far as some of the information gathering that's necessary for us to take that next step in getting further reductions in our flood insurance. Every, every notch that we're able to move up is a 5% reduction in insurance and insurance policies in this town for everyone. And then finally, we do hope that we're able to find somebody who has some knowledge and experience with GIS and other technology. I think that's certainly a benefit that some of us who've, you know, maybe been around a little bit longer, certainly haven't had the opportunity to have that, you know, to refresh ourselves or, or grow within our profession in a way where that's been a part of our day-to-day things. So we're not as conversant in all of those things. And we hope, you know, this would be, again, likely somebody who's younger coming into the field and that they would bring those skills with them. We will certainly be targeting that as part of our hiring process, should this be something council wishes to fund. So that, that's really talking about the planning things. And now we take a shift over here to the, more the physical realm. So one of our great philosophers and head coaches of the 1970s and 80s, Tom Landry, setting a goal is not the main thing, it is deciding how you will go about achieving it and staying with that plan. He's stressing the importance of not just developing the plan and going through that trouble, but taking steps to move forward with it and then seeing it out long-term. You know, that's something that, that's an important and sometimes underrated aspect of this. It's not something, you know, no one has a plan and then goes in and in the next year or two completes all of the aspects. It's a long-term thing, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago, that it's limited to some degree by the time and resources a community can commit to it, but it doesn't mean that we don't need to keep plugging away at it and looking at what we, the, the needs for the future. So in this case, the last, one of the last aspects that we're going to look at, the general categories I've, I've broken this down into that our department will be working with is what I've called improving community assets. So what we're talking about here is really focusing on what we as a town do, what we as a town own, what we're responsible for and how we're going to be dealing with these things in the future. So one of the things that we've already gotten a great jump on over the years, we've, the town has been very proactive in setting aside funds on an annual basis to deal with duck trail repairs and maintenance. We have shifted over the last few years into, you know, just for some recommendations by our engineers into replacement with a concrete multi-use path for the duck trail. And, you know, just due to the longer lifespan and the lesser likelihood of seeing issues like the root intrusion down there in the bottom left corner. So we've made some good progress on this. We've been identifying this year after year, you know, working with our engineers to identify the areas of town that have the worst situations, that need the most immediate attention. We do run these by council every year to, for your input on what projects are most important to you in those needs. So this is something we will need to continue doing. So again, we have been very good about budgeting for this and we've talked about that in our capital improvement program yesterday about the amounts where we're looking at for that moving forward. Retaining walls is a new one, related because the retaining walls are along the duck trail. So related, but not something that we've actually done a good job of being proactive or really even recognizing to any great degree in years past. But we did, you know, probably, you know, at least a couple of years back, began to target this and as we found time and again, with the help of a intern, we were able to do that and really do a more comprehensive job of identifying just first of all, how many of these we have, what kind of condition they're in and what we need to do to bring the worst ones into compliance, you know, make them safe structures that are not going to fail. So again, as part of the capital improvement plan, you've got some items in here related So again, as part of the capital improvement plan, you've got some items in here related to that. Stormwater management, an issue we we have put a good amount of resources into this over the years. We still have a little bit of work left to do, you know, as we're all aware as we drive NC Highway 12. There's still issues and and what I would say to this is one of the one of the challenges we have as a staff is we'll get comments when we have a rain event like we're, you know, have had recently when we've when we something we may be having today for that matter. We can't design stormwater management features that address something at that level. That it's just unrealistic and it would just be overly costly. We can't address the, you know, the once a year storm that just floods everything. But we can, we can do a better job of with addressing some of those key areas that seem to flood more often where we where we have some repetitive problems. Again, as a staff, and this is some kudos, our public safety folks are helpful in identifying some of those areas. Fire department is actually also directly helpful in a program that we've worked with them on where they actually go out proactively before we have some major storms to clean out things ahead of time, you know, so we don't, so that the drains do what they're supposed to do in those areas. But we still have a few odds and ends here that need to be addressed along in in the Highway 12 corridor. And then, as mentioned, our focus though is beginning to shift in looking at, you know, at least identifying solutions to some of the problems that are in the neighborhoods, working with some of those affected associations and seeing if we can identify solutions. And then, and then as we are, and I'll put it this way, as we are legally able, even working on those ourselves. And we do have limitations on what we as a town can do on private property. We can't just go in and spend public money that everyone has contributed to benefit one, you know, private neighborhood. But if there are ties in there to public streets, to our ability to provide public safety, you know, emergency response, there are ways that we can do that and and work with to the degree we can with communities to address those issues as well. I just put this in, this will, this will be completed within our current fiscal year. But just noting that, you know, our rain garden project that we have to the just to the north of us here adjoining the entry into the town park area. So we'll be moving forward with that. We'll be bringing you a, we'll have a discussion about the bids at the the March meeting and how we move forward with that. But we anticipate the contractor would begin this project maybe at the earliest would probably be latter part of March, maybe April, you know, bulk of it would be in April. So we'll be moving forward to that. Again, we did have a small grant for this project as well from Dare County Soil and Water Conservation District. So some of the other big things shoreline stabilization for the town property. We talked about this a lot yesterday. So I'm not going to go into any, you know, any great detail on this. We talked about with Chris DeWitt, VHB, about the sills and how that would work. The the key takeaway from that for council, I think, is really the the commitment to looking at this as a project that no longer deals with just one one cove that had particular problems, but the entire town property extending, you know, all the way from the northern end that a butts, that's had amex to the southern end of the the town as well, towns property. Boardwalk maintenance. And this is one I, you know, I think this is probably as a town, our our most distinctive feature. You know, when I talk with people, when I'm out and around, this is, this is the thing that they look at and say, you know, that that's duck. That's something that they've got that, you know, most places don't have. They don't have anything like that. Just a wonderful, wonderful thing that was done, started, you know, over a decade ago with the first phases was built up. I came in at literally at the very, very end of this. The first time we hosted the the planners lunch here after I arrived, I actually had to. Well, thankfully, Andy Garman was able to to make it here to talk about the project because I didn't have any any working knowledge of the ins and outs. You know, that was, that was his baby, along with many other folks in the community who made this significant project happen. So just a wonderful asset to the town, a real focal point for us and how people get around town, the amenities that it offers for people. It is a destination in and of itself, but it's also an extremely important piece of our transportation system and getting people from point A to point B, particularly our business community through Duck Village. And it's not only just getting them there, it's getting them there in a way that wows them. You know, it's a, it's a great experience. So I really just, you know, I can't say enough about the the benefits that this has had for our community. But as part of that comes a, what is it Spider-Man with great, when it comes great response, great power comes great responsibility. You know, we've got responsibility for keeping this in a very, in very good shape. You know, so that it does continue to be a great experience for our visitors to the community, our residents in the community. And that that involves evaluating this annually, even even, I'd say it's even more than that. I mean, we're, we're looking at this, if we run across a board that appears to be wacky, you know, our staff is identifying that. And this is, this is one of the key things and probably one of the bigger things that we're looking at when we talk about the need for the maintenance program. This is something that when we, you know, when the town was incorporated, this stuff didn't exist. You know, we didn't have a need for a a public works department. You know, things like that, because we just didn't have those kind of assets. Now we've, you know, as a younger but growing community, we're beginning to have those types of assets where we need to look at that a little differently than we have in the past. Amphitheater seating, well, actually, there you go. You don't have to go outside, just look at that photo on the left to see where we're at. But we're replacing all of the former wooden seating. We're we're beginning to, you know, see some rot and other things there where it needed to be replaced. And curiously enough, we had initially envisioned that as a phased project, where we would do that over time. Curiously, I guess, one of the the few benefits of COVID is that by not having to host events, it allowed us a window of time where it just made more sense for us to go ahead, do it as a single larger project and knock it out. And then we have a fresh new thing. And Kim Pittman has been hard at work at that, as I mentioned, for many, many months. And we'll be looking at wrapping that up in the spring. So it'll be ready. Whether we're able to host events is a different story at that point. But we do hope to be able to to do that and we'll have a great facility in place. One of the key aspects of this is that we are replacing not with wood, but, you know, with a, you know, material that's going to last longer over over time. So that's it. Pardon? That's true, that's true. So, so anyway, should be good, you know, yet again, creating that, you know, maintaining that good experience for the residents and visitors who participate in our many events, particularly during the summer months, as well as Jazz Festival. But again, an enormous project. And we've been able to to see, again, tens of thousands of dollars in cost savings with the ability to do this with a, an employee as opposed to contracting this out. Playground equipment, we we touched on this briefly yesterday as well during the capital improvement discussion. You can see our existing equipment in the lower left corner there. And just the, you know, just a few ideas, we'll be creative with this. The council may want to involve, you know, this is the kind of thing that maybe there's a committee or something, you know, that looks at what kind of things would be most appropriate for, you know, if we're replacing the playground equipment to to help with that selection. But again, what we're looking at is in future years, replacing the existing equipment and then, you know, potentially expanding it with other features there. So this is another important component because this is again, something that a lot of people use, both visitors as well as residents and people visiting residents who, you know, and it's important for us to keep this in good shape. And again, we can see cost savings if we're depending on what we're able to to do ourselves on this. And this is probably one of my, one of my favorite quotes, Warren Buffett. Someone sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago. And I really think that gets at the heart, that that goes beyond planning. You know, that really goes to why all of us are here and all of the departments. You know, the work, you know, the effort, the physical improvements. Everything we're doing today really sets the framework for every, everything that comes behind us in the future. So again, just stressing the importance of some of these, those physical improvements and things that we're doing and the benefits that they have for people. So this is my second position that I'm asking for your consideration on moving forward. So the the big question is, and looking at all these different building and property improvements, we've just touched on it, I I've got a list when I sat down with Steve and with Kim. And we talked, it took a little while to to get through it, you know, to to talk through it and get. But I've I've got two pages of, you know, things that we're going to be dealing with over the next, you know, but really from here on forward, it doesn't, doesn't ever end. You know, we're, we're going to have to repair and maintain and do these things. We've touched on a few of the key ones today and yesterday. But what do we need to do to make these things happen? So again, I'll break it down into some of the issues. In this case, one of the things is that did we came to the conclusion that we we are the only town that doesn't have one, is that correct? Okay, I thought we're trying to figure out if we, there was one of them that we had a question about. But we're the only town on the Outer Banks that does not have a dedicated public works department that deals with these types of issues. Now, there are other reasons why we don't. I mean, we don't have a, you know, we don't have a water system we're dealing with or things like that, that some of those departments also deal with. But for the for the main part of it, you know, having worked in other Kitty Hawk and certainly having great familiarity with some of the other towns, that's what these guys do, you know, they have whole departments that are dedicated to, you know, they're, they're dealing with everything from stormwater drainage to roads to, you know, replacing pipes to buildings, you know. Now, there's just, again, just a whole array of things. We don't have that yet. That's something that, again, as a younger town, we just haven't hadn't developed that need yet. But we're, we think we're getting to that point. The workload and amount of inspections has increased. So as I mentioned earlier, Steve is, at this point, can't dedicate the same amount of time that we anticipated him being able to do. That's why we appreciated the, what council did last year in approving the part time position that Kim is filling right now. What we're seeing though is that that may need to, that may even need to be bulked up a little more. So we have less time again for those building maintenance types of functions that initially Steve was, you know, we were looking at him to do those. He doesn't have as much time to do that. The town has added facilities over the years that need maintenance, you know, offices, amphitheater, boardwalk, playground, bandstand, retaining wall. You know, all of these improvements that are have been made over the nearly two decades that we've been a town. But particularly within the last 10 years, we've, we've really picked up the pace on the physical improvements. You know, all of those have been added to our plate. And in the past, it it hasn't been as much of an issue because they were new. You know, this building was brand new. So I'll be, you know, that if it was built fairly well, it's not going to need a, you know, a lot of repairs or or maintenance. However, these improvements are now beginning to age. You know, the earliest sections of that boardwalk are not quite, but maybe coming up on, what, 13, 14 years, something in that range. And, you know, that's, that's where we need to start looking at replacing whole sections or at least spot replacement of boards. You know, we are going to look at need, you know, rebuilding the actual structure eventually in the future. You know, as far as even the pilings and things. Yeah, that's much further down the line. But the point is that all of these improvements are aging and we need to be able to address that. It's not an issue we've had to face before, it's becoming one. Preventative maintenance and repairs are needed to ensure public safety. And that's a real important point that I wanted you to to appreciate is that the reason we're doing this, you know, we have a staff that's here every day. We can't have buildings that are falling down around us or, you know, that are dangerous places to be. But more important than that even is, you know, we are a community that has created a centerpiece here in Duck Village with the town park, town hall. This is a place that hundreds and hundreds of people come every day partic- in season. But even a day like today, when I pulled in, we had people inexplicably walking out to the boardwalk on a day like today. But the point is, we have a lot of people who use these facilities, particularly the boardwalk, but, you know, a lot of these other facilities. And, you know, if we're not maintaining them and keeping them in good shape, not only does it reflect poorly on the town, but it can be a public safety issue. And there is liability for the town in that. So I did want to stress the importance of that from a a public safety standpoint. I mean, the last thing we ever want to see is, you know, that that little headline that says, you know, child falls from broken playground equipment or something like that, you know. So we want to stay on top of this, it's important for us to do that. And finally, we're looking at a position that could begin to serve as a backup and even part of our succession plan for building inspections. You know, throughout our history, we've had one individual in that position. And it's, I mean, to be honest, it's all we've needed. I'm not going to stand here and say we should have had more, that the workload just wasn't there for that. The workload at this point probably isn't there for that. But it is something where we need to begin developing greater capacity as an organization to to fill those slots. I've actually been, I've been very impressed by Kim and the initiative he's taken in actually doing some initial building inspection classes. He's even gone through one of the certifications. So he's shown us he's, you know, in in this case, and and again, we're not talking about an individual per se. You know, but he's shown us he's got that capability. And we were looking at, we would want someone in the, in this position that would have that capability of taking on some of that building inspection load. So they could assist, you know, probably with some of the the simpler inspections initially, serve as a backup so that we don't, you know, we're fortunate in that we do have some reciprocal agreements with other communities for building inspection, you know, Steve will help out. Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, they'll help us out sometimes when he's out. But this gives us a greater capacity to do that on our own as well. So that being said, the the request that we we do want you to So that being said, the, the request that we, we do want you to consider as part of this budget process is to consider bumping that up to a full-time maintenance technician position that would conduct repairs, maintenance, cleaning, you know, variety of different activities here within the, the town. When I say cleaning, I'm not talking about the, you know, day-to-day stuff, but, um, you know, keeping things in good shape, like with mildew when we have the, um, the midges, things like that, you know, that they would be involved with that, um, involved with repairs and some duties that we otherwise contract. You know, this could be a position where we look at things like right now, we're contracting for our trash removed from the, the town trash cans with Coin Jock Farms. Um, you know, we could, that could be a duty that is, you know, becomes part of this position, but also other repairs that we've done, um, that, you know, we've had to contract out in the past. These could be things that this individual, this position could deal with. Um, assisting with those seasonal projects and every year we have the, you know, changing out the banners, putting up the, the seasonal lights, things of that nature, that they, they would help with those things. Um, I'm sure there's aspects of the events program that, um, where we could provide that extra hand and assistance to Christian and Betsy. Um, assisting with storm damage assessment, flood pumping. Um, this will allow us to keep the bulk of that within the department. We won't have to necessarily go outside and pull resources from particularly fire department, but also police department, particularly with the, the pumping, both of them have been great assistance with that. But we've had to pull resources for damage assessment from fire department on many occasions in the past. This would allow us to have someone trained in-house who can, who can do those things and work with our volunteers on that, um, when we have storms, um, can work with vehicles, even as far as, you know, getting them here. We don't have to spend other staff time dealing with some of the detailing and maintenance. So there could be some savings there. Um, one of the ones that's maybe not as greatly appreciated, but maintaining our irrigation system, winterizing, there's a lot of infrastructure in the ground and we've, um, done a much better job over the last few years of really identifying and bringing that up to snuff. But it would be really helpful if we had that, that capacity internally. We had that capability for someone who can do those repairs and, and things as needed. And finally, as mentioned, someone who could, um, be involved in building code and inspection training to develop themselves in that way. So finally, um, we'll leave you with one last quote. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Margaret Mead. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, uh, but I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions that the council members might have.
Joe, I'll start. I've got a couple of questions. Let's go back to the community planner. Number one, uh, K salary, is that entirely charged to your department now?
I'll have to, I see, I see a nodding head in the town.
Okay. So something, that's something.
Yes, it is.
So that's something we want to take a look at in the future.
And again, as part of the budget, yeah. So if this is something that works out, you know, that may even be something we would look at anyway, whether, whether or not this position is, you know, as far as divvying that position up a little differently.
The second, second question is, how much were you budgeted for the intern? Cause I know we use the intern for probably six months. So basically we'd be looking at replacing, you know, a full-time, so you've already, but you've already in your baseline had that intern in there.
The intern was earning, um, and again, it started out as a part-time position, um, $15 an hour. And I believe that, I don't, I believe the hourly rate changed, so I believe it was $15 an hour throughout, but yeah, it did go. Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so it began at that and then, and it was a part-time position. It was really intended initially to fulfill the requirements the intern had for, um, getting credit at East Carolina University and their planning program. Um, but she did such a good job and was available, um, to continue on with us and that eventually morphed into a full-time position. So it became a, it was a 40, 40-hour week basically at what eventually became $18 an hour, um, for that.
So you already had a lot of that expense in your baseline this year?
So that would be, well, we were, it was something that, um, Chris had prepared. I don't, I'm, we, we did have it built in for, through the end of September. So it was a three-month period. And again, that works out to about 700, it's $720 a week as far as the, the salary at that rate and those number of hours. So, um, that was for three months and that, that's a, that's approximately when that relationship ended and, um, the intern moved on now and Savannah now works for Currituck County. So, um, you know, so that, that was okay within this year's budget, but we didn't have, you know, we don't have that move forward and it'd be difficult to find an intern with those capabilities. So that's why we proposed it as more of a position.
Well, my third is more of a comment than a question and, and it's something that Drew and I just briefly discussed, but you know, the league has a program putting, placing people out into towns and cities. And even though I don't know where council's going to go with the community planner, you still might want to explore that from a standpoint of capabilities and, and, uh, you know, possible candidates out there because they're very skilled and in public management, et cetera. So that's something that in anticipation, I don't know where council's going to come from on this or on the budget, but you may want to do a little preliminary work. And Drew and I say, yeah, we did, because we're familiar with it, obviously discussed it a little bit. So that's just, just a comment for the two of you.
Okay. Sounds like great opportunity.
With that, open up for other questions from council? You, you already had Kim as a halftime person. You just want to bring them on full-time.
That's correct. So in that instance, it would just be upgrading from about, he's looking right now at about, you know, 20, 20, 25 hours a week and this would bump that up to 40.
So this year we had a halftime position as the community planner and a halftime position as the maintenance person approximately in, in our budget.
Not the first part, no. We didn't have anything for a community planner at all. We, we did have a, we had some money for the intern.
That's what I was calling Savannah.
For three months. Okay. Okay. For three months.
And we kept her on for another two?
No, it was, that, that was basically where it ended. I mean, her initial, her initial term was way back in like February, January, February, March is where the initial term ended. And then, um, Chris found some money in terms of, that we were able to use to continue that, um, through the.
So we had.
Spring months. And then we budgeted specifically for that, for a three-month period.
Okay, only three, okay.
That ended in the end of September. So, so that was what we had for that position. Um, the, the other one, um, the position that Kim is filling, um, was a, a part-time position that was budgeted and again, at about 20, 24, 25 hours. So it's about a three-day week, the equivalent of a three-day week.
But we're not looking at full.
And this would go up to five.
We're not looking at two full-time positions. Some of them are already in this year's budget.
Correct. That, that position basically you'd be adding 15 hours a week to, and, and there would be another aspect of benefits that would kick in related to that.
Additional questions from council? Monica, I think she's coming in.
I did have a question. Um, the, uh, position study work that we were, that we were getting briefed on yesterday, um, does that, did, did any of these positions, um, come into play for that, uh, for that analysis that we were having done by Betsy? I'm sorry, Becky. I was trying to remember her name, sorry.
She, she has evaluated all of the existing positions, including the maintenance, the part, including the part-time maintenance technician as well as the duties of the other people within the department. So she's looked at all the existing positions. Her study is not going to address, to my knowledge, um, any, anything other than, you know, she, she may make recommendations as it regards to shifting duties or things of that nature, um, or maybe helping identify needs, but I'm not, I don't know that it's going to go quite that, that far. She didn't evaluate us for additional needs, put it that way.
So she, um, didn't have an opportunity to, um, evaluate the position of the, uh, community planner that we had as an intern because we basically, she, that intern wasn't here when, when Becky was doing her analysis. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
Okay. Just checking. I think you've, um, you've, you've certainly made a, a presentation that is, gives us a lot of food for thought and I think the idea that, um, our town has matured and, and has a lot of, uh, maintenance needs and, and other, uh, you know, other, other, uh, supports. I mean, we've used a lot of outside services over the past. And so now it's just a, a matter of making a decision whether to bring someone in-house. Something that you said early on in your presentation resonated with me, which is the money that we saved by having our, um, part-time maintenance person doing that renovation at the amphitheater and saving tens of thousands of dollars. That, that really resonated with me. Um, and, and just getting labor right now is, is a little bit of a challenge to use outside sources. So a lot of good food for thought here, Joe. I thank you.
Any additional questions from council?
Joe, it just, I'd like to, I'd like to share a couple of thoughts. First of all, I, I want to thank you for what your department has done. It, it has always been remarkable to me how much the community development department has accomplished with, with such, you know, scarce human resources and, and sometimes physical resources too. It's just extraordinary. And so thank you for that. And I also wanted to say that I very much appreciate, um, how you have got, how you presented the idea of, you know, we have, we have built and we've inspired and we've created a lot of things over the last 18 years. That was the phase that we're in, but you know, I very much feel that now is, um, the time, to borrow somebody's words who will know that I'm quoting him, protect the castle, reinforce the castle. Um, I think that we are moving into that kind of phase where we're looking at, um, how to best bolster and protect and preserve all of our assets, physical and human. Um, and so all of the things that you listed about, uh, you know, where we're at and what needs to happen with all of these wonderful things that we have created, I, I appreciate that. And like Monica said, it's great food for thought. Um, but I hope it's more than just food for thought. I hope that it really does come into everybody's consciousness about, you know, it is a time to really look at what we've done and take stock in it and figure out how to best protect it and enhance it and, and move forward. Um, so thank you for that too, Joe.
Oh, let me just add one more thing. Nancy, thank you for making those comments. Um, one thing that I'd just like to make a note of, um, as, as we, about, as we look at the, what the community development department has done for us, and it, it's astonishing really, is how we've been able to parlay grant money and, and do so much more than our budget would ever allow. Uh, um, and, 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 you know, to the, to the benefit of the, of the, of the county, of the region, not just to Duck, but we have, um, we have done so much with being able to bring in these other resources. I mean, just this year alone, not only did we deal with the pandemic, but all the, all of the accomplishments of the department this year were, were beyond amazing. I, I mean, just big projects, uh, mammoth things with, um, volatility in staff. Uh, it, it's been, it's been an amazing year. Uh, and, and it just doesn't, it, it just, it didn't miss a beat really. In fact, it was more than we've done in past years with, with less and with way more challenges. So again, kudos to, to Joe and his department, his leadership of not just that department, but the entire town. Uh, you know, we really, uh, we owe a lot to you, um, all of you in that department and particularly you, Joe. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? So Joe, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Thank you to your staff for attending and for all they've done for the town.